Good afternoon and welcome to the September 24th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have cell phones, pagers, or similar devices, we would ask you to either turn those off or silence them. If you would. If you are not the applicant and you have come to talk to us about a case today, there are slips like this, they're on the table outside the chamber's door. If you would complete it and turn it into our clerk, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And Commissioners, the first order of business is the minutes of the September 10th meeting.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes.
I don't know.
Janice?
Yes.
Voting? It's not showing up. Two, hit two. There you are. Minutes are approved. We had five, so the minutes are approved. Next is continuances.
We do have some continuances. There are 10 uncontested requests for continuance. I'm going to read those 10 items. Item B-18 for PUD 1591 to be deferred to October 8th. Item B-19 for C-6739 to defer to October 8th. Item B-20 for PUD 1593, defer that to October 8th. Item B-21 for C-6747, defer to October 8th. Item B-22 for CE-916, defer to October 8th. Item B-23 for PUD 1597, defer to October 22nd. Item B-24 for CE-921, defer to October 22nd. Item B-25 for SPUD 847 to defer to October 22nd. Item B-26 for PUD 1581, defer to December 10th. And item B-27 for CE-6715 to defer to December 10th.
Is anyone here today to talk to us about any of the items just read? Items 18 through 27 on our agenda.
Move approval of the uncontested request?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
And we have three new requests for continuance. Item B-15 for C-6743, to defer that to October 22nd. Item B-16 for PC-10425, to defer to October 22nd. And item B-17, PUD SP-1549, to defer to October 8th.
Again, same question. Anyone come to talk to us today about items 15, 16, or 17 on our agenda? Motion? Move any requests?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. That's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent docket.
Okay, there are five items on the consent docket which I'll read in for the record. Item one is C-6750, the final plat of Castlewood Trails Edition, Section 3, located south of Northwest 36th Street and east of Sarah Road. Item two is C-6754, the final plat of Fall and Spring, Section 3, located south of Northwest 150th and west of Rockwell. Item three is C-6736, the extension of the final plat of Stony Creek Office Park, located east of Council and north of Hefner. Item four is PV-095, to vacate two utility easements in the plat of Valencia Park, located north of Northwest 178th and east of May. And item five is DA-24407, for a split deed approval on property located at 3217 Southwest 135th Court.
Again, on items 1 through 5, anyone come to talk to us about those today?
Move the consent.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. And they're approved. Thank you.
Under item B, items requiring separate vote, item six is SPUD 846, to rezone 4410 Northwest 50th Street from R1 to SPUD 846.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had some confusion and some concerns from the neighbors to the south regarding this SPUD. So what we have done is eliminated the south portion of the property to be rezoned and leave it in the R1 zoning. And it'll exist as, it's basically a pecan orchard today. I've talked to the neighbors. Mr. Self and his neighbors are here today, and they're supportive of this change. We limited the size of the property to allow for the remodeling of the existing home to become an office, and with a little bit of extra room behind there to expand the building if necessary in the future. And that still gives us considerable depth of setback between the residential behind us and our south property line. We are in agreement with the two TEs. We request your approval.
We do have someone signed up. Sir, if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Walter Jackson Owens, 4333 Northwest 49th Street. I also own the property up there that's zoned R1 at 4330 Northwest 50th, and I own three lots down east on Northwest 49th.
Okay, and tell us, you're protesting the rezoning, is that correct?
We protested it at your last meeting, and since then, we've had communications with Mr. Johnson, and he has addressed in this document the concerns that we had. And we're here today to say that we do not protest the change outlined here, but we are all Reaganites. We trust, but we will verify. As a neighborhood, we are unified in maintaining the quietness of that neighborhood. They'd address the traffic concerns, and the parking concerns, and the water flow concerns. As long as this stands, we will support them because we are not anti-business, but we preserve quiet neighborhoods very diligently. As you can see, we're all too old to go looking for a new home. We like what we have. We've all been there in excess of 45 years, and it's been a good neighborhood for us. And that's our concern, that this be on record, and so that if we have to protest it again, we'll have you on our side.
Watch and verify is a good plan. Thank you very much. Tim?
I just had one question. Tim, on the south, the screening along the south boundary?
Yes.
Tell me about that. You say you're not providing it now?
Yeah, part of the SPUD was to allow us to just leave that open because it's just an orchard.
Right.
And we're so far north of their property, and that has a, like a barbed wire fence down there, our south property line.
Okay, so?
Wire fence.
You want to keep the trees, basically?
Yes.
You'd have to tear those out if you had to do screening at this time?
Right.
Okay, understood. All right, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that.
Tim, my question was about the maintenance of the land that's to the south of your building that's now continuing to be R1. And I, you know, my question was going to be, I assume you're going to mow it and maintain it, and that you've got a vigilante group right behind you that I'm sure?
Yeah, all the property's owned by one person.
That will make sure that you're going to be mowing that and keep it in a nice condition.
Yes.
Right.
Tim, I noticed that the language on the site lighting is pretty much the standard boilerplate. I was wondering, is this a situation where we can limit the lighting to like under the eaves? You know, the way residential lighting would be?
We can add that, absolutely. No, yeah, we can add some language regarding clarifying lighting. We don't want any wall packs or anything shining to the south.
Great.
Janice, TE.
We think that's necessary.
We'd be agreeable to add a TE that would, and we'll clarify that before it goes to council.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Action?
I move approval adding the TE that we'll subsequently add regarding clarifying the lighting with respect to, under eve lighting?
Yes, sir.
Et cetera, no light reflecting back to the south. And other than that, I think it's a good, good plan. Let's move approval.
We have a motion and a second as condition. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item seven is C-6746, the final plat of Cameron Parkway, located east of Broadway Extension and south of Britton Road.
Again, Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. As you know, we were here a few weeks back, a few months back, with regard to the zoning south of the existing tower that has been acquired by American Fidelity, and that we successfully rezoned that to a mixed-use project south of where this road ends on this application. So this is an opportunity to come back and name a private road to allow for a southbound circulation from their entrance off of Britton Road, and they wanted to have it named on behalf of the founder of American Fidelity, and that's why we're here with this application. It does require a variance.
I was surprised at the name selected, but other than that. Commissioners, discussion or a motion on the variance?
I move in favor of, there is.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes. And a motion on the item?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item eight is C-6752, the preliminary plat of Lincoln Boulevard Industrial Edition, located west of Lincoln Boulevard and south of Northeast 150th.
Good afternoon. Brett Lordson of Olson Associates, representing the developer for the project. And it's an industrial subdivision on Lincoln. We have cemented our preliminary plat, obviously, and have, we agree with the staff comments and have coordinated the cul-de-sac length as well as other aspects of the property, and be glad to answer any questions if there are any, but we request your approval.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
I'll move in favor of the variance on TE 2.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE 2. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move approval of the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item nine is PUD 1595, to rezone 10501 Northwest 122nd from AA to PUD 1595.
Tim Johnson again, with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. I don't know how I got so lucky to have all my items so close together, but I'm grateful. This is a little piece of property that has been acquired by the Sundance Air Park. If you'll recall, probably about a year ago, we came in and did a zoning of the overall air park to allow for some live-over hangar space to be developed in the southeast portion of this, as well as some additional hangars on the west side, north of the existing air park office. This property became available, and they were able to pick it up. So basically, we're expanding our zoning. That was approved in PUD 1578 to allow that expansion to extend into this AA piece of Sorry. So we've got a schematic layout of how those hangars might sit in, that little pocket of area. We've got a setback from the runway, and then the units. We're going to be coming back, obviously, for a specific plan. When the materials and the height are all specified, all that's being worked on right now. This is a unique product that is getting started to be done here. So you can see, this is kind of the way the buildings were clustered here, and I'm showing you this because one of the comments was regarding the creek and being 100-foot setback from the floodplain. And if you recall, a few weeks back, we talked about that same issue with regard to another zoning. The floodplain is something that is, it's regulated, but it also permits fill in the floodplain up to the floodway. And it's a little hard to see on this, but we have a very narrow floodway. That's that red-hatched area, and these little fingers of these low-lying tributaries here and here would be areas that would typically be filled in as part of the development, and it's permitted by FEMA. And so we would, one of the TEs asked for us to be 100-foot setback from the floodplain. We would like to word that again, to be 100-foot setback from the floodway, and we're willing to do that. And I think part of it is to, you know, to retain trees and such, but there's, this has been farmland. The few trees that are out there are cedars and scrubs. So it's not like we're going to lose a whole orchard of trees in these areas, but I can anticipate us filling here, and filling here, and filling around here to achieve that layout. So we do agree with all the TEs in the PUD, or on the staff report, I'm sorry. I would ask for your approval.
No one signed up. Nick, any comments?
It appears that you would like to change floodplain to floodway. I had a question for you, under lighting regulations, again, kind of that same standard boilerplate. I was wondering if we would be willing to say that outdoor lights within any office or commercial tract will be directed away from any adjacent property, period, and eliminate the residential?
I think we could do that on them. Anticipate anybody out there being bothered by any of the development.
Okay. And I'll move approval of the item with the change to TE number two, from the language floodplain to floodway.
We have a motion and a second amending TE 2. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item nine's approved.
Item 10 is PUD 1596, to rezone 11620 Northwest 122nd from R2 to PUD 1596.
Brad Reed with Crafton Toll. I'll be representing the applicant. This was bought by a development. Their product was too large for the regular R2 maximum lot coverage, so we're requesting that that be updated to 70 percent. We agree with the TEs, and I guess how many questions we have to answer, we ask for your approval on this.
I have a question about this. My staff report tells me that subdivisions with more than 50 units should have at least two points of entrance slash egress, which I note that we do not have. But there's also no recommendation in the TEs that we should have. So I'm curious about that.
This has a widened boulevard at the front. It's a total of 80 feet on there. There'll be a widened two-lane with the 20-foot.
And so that eliminates that knee? It satisfies the requirement?
In this case, the subdivision's already built. He's just, just coming in to amend the lot coverage with the PUD.
Ah, okay, never mind.
Commissioners, any other comments? As I say, no one has signed up. I'll move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 11 is C-6738, the final plat of Brookstone Ridge, Phase 2, located east of Mustang Road and south of Southwest 29th Street.
Brad Reed with Crafton Toll. This subdivision, we had continued at one point. Staff had concern with the way that traffic would flow through this. We've worked with them, fire marshal, and changed their cul-de-sac into a through street. I think it handles all their requirements. We agree with all the TEs, and we ask for your approval on this one as well. You have any questions, I can answer them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There is a stubout on the east side of this. It doesn't look like it goes anywhere.
Yeah, I think this was piecemealed together. We had a new developer buy this, didn't like the layout exactly. This would be, it's changed. It's just, I think this was an old, full of the preliminary plat. It's slightly different. It'll meet up on Southwest 34th Street.
Okay, so it will meet up?
Yes.
Southwest 34th.
That's what kind of where.
Okay, all right.
No one has signed up. So that we'll connect to the east?
Yes.
I'll move approval.
Say it.
Oh, to the variance? Do we have a variance?
Actually, the sentence talking about the variance is not needed after the redrawing of the.
Okay, so I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 12 is SPUD 848, to rezone 3,000 Northwest 150th Street from R1 to SPUD 848.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Matt Austin with Caliber Development is also here with me today. What we have is an application for spud 848, which is along Northwest 150th West of May Avenue. My client owns the balance of most of that land that surrounds this, and what this spud would do is allow approximately 1.4 acres to be developed commercially. When you look at what surrounds this, it's in PUD 302 on the east, south, and west of this site. PUD 302 is a PUD from the mid-'80s. It is really wide open, and so what we have attempted to do is restrict as much as possible and as much as is reasonable. And when you look at some of the TEs, one of which asks that we restrict access on 150th, which we are willing to do. And so with that, it's more likely that these 1.4 acres will be developed as a larger overall plan with the balance of that. So with that, we still would like some flexibility. And when you look at the uses, I believe that they are compatible with the area, and certainly much more restrictive than what's already out there. We do agree with all of the TEs. What I handed out that front page is the site plan that has been submitted to staff. With that, I'd ask for your approval.
And David?
Yes, sir.
All these uses are included in the existing 302?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
What have you eliminated?
Glad you asked. I actually have an exhibit of that very question.
While I'm passing this down, I'll ask the second part of my question. The handout you just gave us?
Yes, sir.
Proposes two buildings. And I know it's a proposal for commercial, but do we need all 35 of those uses for these two buildings?
Well, like I said, it's, even though it looks like a lot of uses, I think when you see the handout I'm handing out, on the right hand is PUD 302, on the left hand is our spud, and you'll see we have eliminated a significant number of uses. And so our code has very specific, are very, very specific in what uses are permitted. And so while it looks like a lot, I think if you actually look at the uses, none of them are obnoxious. They're all uses that you would typically find within a commercial PUD. And the fact that we've eliminated so many uses that were permitted and are permitted surrounding it on all three sides, I would submit that it's a reasonable application.
Thank you.
What about the cemetery? Are we going to screen that?
Yes. The TEs asked for a five-foot setback off of that, which we agree to do, as well as fencing from that. So it will be buffered and screened and setback from.
The other question I have, I guess, is really for staff. One of the TE seems to suggest that the application is premature, that a conceptual plan must be submitted prior to consideration of this application. Is that really what that means?
That was what he provided to staff subsequent to the staff report.
Ah, okay.
And it was passed around?
It's the front page on this.
No one has signed up. Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 13 is ABC-844 for an ABC-2 overlay of the C-3 districts located at 11109 North May Avenue.
As a refresher, Commissioners, the last time we heard this, Commissioner Gales made the point that this is a matter of land use and not code enforcement. So that is the context in which we need to consider the application.
And one of the things that was raised the last time we were here, I believe by Ms. Gales, was the issue of the people in the immediately surrounding area, primarily the Quail Creek area. And so we've actually, we were in talks with the people at the Quail Creek HOA before we came the last time, and we've actually received correspondence from the HOA for the neighborhood in the immediate area. And if it's okay, I'd like to pass it out.
Commissioner Gales may have some context on that, but?
Well, he raised the issue last time. I think it was fairly raised, and I think it's important for the commission to be aware of the fact that Mr. Rogers is duly committed to being a partner in this community, bringing a concept that the community doesn't have, and bring a concept that I think the immediately surrounding community approves wholeheartedly. I think what that letter reflects is that, it reflects Mr. Rogers' commitment to the community and the community's statement that if he's willing to honor his commitment, the community has no objection. Now, the HOA couldn't be here, I don't guess, but I thought it was important for the Commissioners to be.
Mr. Ferguson called me this morning.
Oh, he did?
And told me of this letter. He did not read the letter to me. He told me that you had made commitments, and I'm scanning the letter now, you'd made commitments as to operating hours, and I don't see those set out in this letter.
Well, I think what he's referring to, actually, Mr. Gales, is the letters, the letter that Mr. Rogers sent to, just first, I think you'll find on top of page two, is a question of what Mr. Rogers' intentions are with regard to the restaurant concept.
I see. And the last meeting, if you'll recall, there was a suggestion because, you know, maybe see, we can't require these type of things, that you might consider a SPUD. Obviously, you have decided not to do that because you're here. And my concern is the same as it was when we heard it last time, that, you know, we have a high-volume restaurant penetrating up my avenue. It's not on the hard corner. It's not buried in a shopping center. It's just going on up my avenue. I question the appropriateness of that. I notice in your letter here that the operational details provide document to HOA a reasonable restaurant practice, and your assurance we will not find out we have another dugout.
That's exactly what we don't want, Mr. Gales, is another dugout. The dugout meets that criteria nicely all by itself.
And running until 2:00 in the morning, I see another dugout situation. I mean, this far up my avenue, I don't know that we need a restaurant operating at 2:00 in the morning. That's my concern. But I share that concern at that location.
If I might make an observation, I believe that the restaurant that formerly operated at that location was an extended-hour restaurant. I think that Taco Cabana is open until 1:00 or 24, oh, it's a 24-hour restaurant that does serve beer at all of its locations. So this concept is not new to the area. Again, Taco Cabana is open 24 hours, seven days a week, and it does serve alcohol. I just?
Taco Cabana was a lower volume, and it was operating on an old special permit. So there's a day-night difference.
So if you're willing to limit your hours of operation, I haven't seen the letter that you're talking about, but if you're willing to do that, why not go ahead and do an SPUD so that we can make that part of the actual enforceable zoning overlay?
Well, I just don't think my client's really interested in rezoning the property. I think he's happy with the situation as it stands, and based on what we've seen there... I think he's happy with the situation as it stands, and based on what we've seen, there isn't any real legal reason to, to deny the application. It's, it's, it's a, it's set up, the building was already there, the building was used as a 24-hour restaurant and that served alcohol, and, and the restaurant itself is, is ready to go. What we're here for is the ability to serve margaritas to the customers at, at, at dinnertime. So whether or not the restaurant stays open until 2:00 in the morning, or midnight, or 11:30, we don't, we don't see any, any issue with that, and we're, and we're asking the Commission to see that, given the past history of this same piece of property, and all due respect to Mr. Gales' concerns, I think they're fair concerns, given the dugout's history. But this is not the dugout. It's not a bar. It's smoke-free. It's family-friendly, and it is, it is set up to allow for...
You understand that we're not giving this overlay to your client?
I do understand that.
It's going to run with the land.
I understand that, ma'am.
And just because he's not going to operate the dugout doesn't mean that the next person who comes along won't be able to do that, given the zoning, if it is not limited in a way that is enforceable, as in through an S.P.U.D.
I understand that, ma'am. I understand that.
Okay.
And you wouldn't be here today if there wasn't potentially a legal basis for us to make a judgment either to approve this or to deny it.
Sure, sure.
So just so we're, just so we're clear.
Absolutely. I mean, we're here asking for the Commission's approval.
Right, I understand.
I understand that. And, and to answer your question, ma'am, my client's focus is on putting a restaurant in that doesn't require any subsequent user, at least not anytime soon, but, you know, that, that's, subsequent users and uses, that's not really what we're focused on.
But it's what we have to focus on.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and I, I do, I do understand it, and I do understand your, your concerns.
Well, we have, we do have someone from the Police Department who has at least signed up to speak, so... In light of your understanding that we are considering land use issue here and not code enforcement, which is really rights to you.
Yes, sir. I'm here mostly to represent the Police Department, to ask any, or answer any questions that you may have.
Give us your name and address, so we have it.
Lieutenant Doug Kimberlin, Oklahoma City Police.
Thank you.
701 Colcord. As far as the, just the land use part of it, through my inspection of the property itself, I found that the, the inside property of the grand room, or the main room, is set up more as a bar that may sell food incidentally to being open versus a restaurant that serves alcohol incidental to, to that service. The seating that is around the perimeter is consistent with other establishments that Mr. Rogers has. In my, my experience dealing with, with other clubs or restaurants that we've inspected, it appears that the way he has set up this grand room, it would be rather easy to move those temporary seedings out. The, the sound system inside that small room is, is rather large compared to the amount of square footage that it is, it's placed in, and the bar area is actually a very significant part of the, of the premise. So I find it interesting that, that a representative here is saying that they're just going to serve margaritas to the client at dinner, because most of the time, that, that designated bar area is literally with the machine and has a sign saying no one under 21. So that's, those are the items that I, I'd like to present to the Commission for consideration just with regards to the land use.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Lieutenant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, as I said, last week, and I'll reiterate, I just don't think this far up May is the right place for a high-volume restaurant operating at 2:00 in the morning. I was hoping they'd come back with an S.P.U.D., but I can't support this application in present form. I'll move denial.
We have a motion in second for denial. Any further discussion? Cast your votes, and it is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 is D.A. 24408 for a lot split deed approval on property located at 7931 Northwest 18th Street.
My name is Charlie Allen with Hale and Associates Survey Company. The owner, Julian Taylor, is here also this afternoon with me. This property is at Northwest 18th and Council. Currently has deed approval for three lots. They would like to have five lots. I think we've got some, some neighbors that are signed up to talk with some concerns about that. I've got some handouts that I'd like to show some. We've got some flooding problems, kind of a picture of what they propose to build there. I've got some acreage of lots surrounding this property. Maybe I've got a second alternative as far as with a four-lot layout that may be more appealing to the planning commission. So do you want me to hand them out now or wait?
Yeah, share them, share them with Commissioner Gales, and we'll pass them.
Before we get too far in, Charles, I mean, I will say that the application requires four separate variances and an additional 17 feet of right-of-way. It, it really does not seem, just as a macro statement, to be in compliance with any of the things that we would ask for as part of our mandate regarding land use. So I'm just concerned that it's so far out of bounds that we're going to read, it's going to be a challenge to bring it back in. I'll just put it that way.
I understand.
And setting aside concerns about how big the lots are versus surrounding lots, et cetera, I'm pretty familiar with this area.
Okay.
And so I just have to make that statement before we get started. It's pretty far off the mark based on our staff report.
I understand, and I think three of those are really because Northwest 18th Street's not currently at city standards.
Right.
We don't have a problem with variance, number one, adding 17 feet to council. We've already somewhat assumed that's going to happen with that first tract being, I think, 98 feet wide versus the 77-foot wide of the other, other four. So, you know, to be honest, we'll probably, I'm going to ask for a continuance to come back with a S.PUD. If, if we get good feelings, the four-lot layout, something that maybe works better for the planning commission, that's probably my victory for the day.
Well, I have a couple of more fundamental questions, perhaps.
Okay.
Is this all the land that your client controls here?
In...
Or does he own some of the surrounding area?
I think he owns land across the street on Northwest 119th.
But contiguous to this, this is all?
No.
All he has?
Okay.
And we're doing lot splits?
Correct.
And we don't have sewer?
Correct.
So what's your proposal for sewer?
On-site aerobic system.
Aerobic system. And my, my next question is, why lot splits? Why not come in and plated?
Just easier, time issues. We've met with staff. We, the five lots front on Northwest 18th Street gave us frontage onto a public street, little over a half-acre size, really just, just was an easier way to do it. In hindsight, I mean, we hadn't met with all the owners. They're here today. They have their concerns, and that's why we've come up with the four-lot layout, which would require coming back with a S.PUD.
Thank you.
Well, it, it's your application. I mean...
Well, I think...
Tell us what you want to do. Well, I mean, I know what these guys are going to say. No offense. I've got a pretty good idea of what, what the protesters are going to say, so, I mean, you know, it's kind of hard to ask them to come up to speak to this application if what they're going to see is a different application with only four lots, et cetera. I mean, look, the house that you proposed is certainly nice. I'm not, I'm not going to address that at this particular time, but, I mean, clearly your own picture shows that we do have some pooling, at least some pooling concerns there. So have you met with the neighbors?
Just one.
Who was that?
Uh...
So, I mean, I don't know. No offense to your application. It's yours. You can, you can do with it. As I kind of indicated in my opening, I can't support one that's got nothing but variances and an extension of the right-of-way. I don't think anybody else can, so if you want to redo it, my suggestion is you might redo it and then meet with the neighbors so that what we're voting on is what you would really like to have happen.
Okay.
I think that'd be, that would be a better step for me, at least.
Yeah.
I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I don't think you're going to get too far with this one today.
And I, I really didn't think we would, and that's why I'm sorry for the 11th hour, you know, continuance, but I think, you know, all the neighbors have shown up, would like to speak, whether they...
Well, is it all right if we set this to another date and so you can, you can see the design that they're considering? It's a different design than what you've seen.
Is your timeframe on there? Is it two weeks, or four weeks, or three months?
Well, it's that one. Well, it's that one.
It won't be two weeks. I can tell you that. Y'all, this has a little bit more work to do, I think, in my view, so...
I'm looking at all the standing water, and I'd be a little concerned if any of it was standing over an aerobic system.
Yeah. Sewers is not, not that far away either.
Looks like this catches a lot of water when it rains.
Well, I, I'm compelled by the staff report where it indicates that sewer's not that far away, so, anyway, I would suggest that we continue it.
Excuse me, who's Mr.?
Come on up.
Who's Mr. Stanek?
Mr. Stanek.
Oh. We want to hear from you. You signed up.
Did you get your stuff?
Give us your name and address, please.
Don Stanek, 7905 Northwest 18th.
Thank you.
I presented a petition to y'all, asking you not to approve this, this lot change. We have it signed by 100% of the owners on the street, other than four vacant, or not vacant, rental properties, and the owners are, are not, not present. So we have 100% of the...
People who are there.
That are people that are there that signed this petition. As, as, as y'all know, this is a residential area with lots, plated one to six acres. We live in the country, but we also love being in Oklahoma City. We're home to squirrels, rabbits, foxes, turkeys, and other wildlife. Primarily, we have open yards with no wood fences, which mar the view and allow the wildlife to flourish. This openness creates a close-knit community. We don't look at fences. We look at neighbors and their houses at distances, and we, we watch out for it, and this makes this area a, basically a crime-free area, which is nice to have in Oklahoma City and that part of town. We object to five lots. We would also, at this point, without knowing what is planned, we'll object to four lots for the following reasons. Number one, precedent. Once a lot like this is divided into four or five lots, then there are other vacant lots that other developers are then going to come in and try and develop into four or five lots, and that's not what we have. We don't, you know, we moved out there to not be in high-density homes. You know, everyone out there wants to live in the country. The more homes you put out there, the more problems you have with water runoff. This is sandy soil, but, you know, you put homes and driveways and everything else in, it's going to call, exacerbate the water problem that we have in the neighborhood. This area is being discovered. People are starting to move to this area. I moved there two years ago from far north Oklahoma City. There are two homes being built out there now where people have bought the property, and they're building very large homes, because where else can you find in Oklahoma City acreages with large oak trees and pecan trees and still be in the city? There are a lot of places to build high-density homes, not too many for acreages. Coincidentally, this building of larger homes does increase the tax basis, which is always good for the city. Septic tanks. Y'all, y'all talked about septic tanks and the sewer. We understand that, that they have a, that there's a sewer main that they can tie into within a quarter mile. You know, we think that's, that's fine, because if you break it up into five lots, the lots are just barely over a half an acre, and this isn't a flood-prone area as the, as the city talks about. Y'all had a, two weeks ago, I watched y'all's meeting, and there was a lot of discussion about the aerobic septic sewer tanks and the problems that arise from that. We would have the same problems. The effluent going on to land that's, that may be flooded, the loss of electrical power that causes effluent, also the fact that if the lots are 77 feet wide and there's a 25-foot area on each side of, of the property that they can't spray the effluent, then there's only 20, 50, 27 feet of land to spray that effluent. That's not a very large area to spray all of the sewage. So we, we feel like that they need to have areas large enough to have regular sewer, septic tanks, excuse me, which would be the anaerobic type or tied to the sewer mains. If y'all do decide to grant the subdivision into five, we ask that you not approve the variance that does away, you know, where they don't have to tie it into the sewer Traffic. 18th Street is a substandard street as set by the city. It's very narrow. It has no curbs. Water flows down both sides of it, you know, along gutters, and it, it just can't handle too much more traffic. You start adding five or four homes, that's, that's eight, eight homes is eight more cars, typically two cars a house, that, that will start, will very quickly deteriorate the street. Noise. I moved out there two years ago to get away from houses close to each other. I object to being able to, I object to anyone being able to put a house next to me within five feet of my property line, because I moved out there to get away from that. The area is not, is not originally zoned for that. Let's, let's keep it the way it was. Lot width, 77 feet. Some subdivision regulations I've read stipulate that new subdivisions of existing lots not be smaller in lot area or lot width than the average of the lots in the same block in the same subdivision. There are no lots in Kristner Jennings Acres that are 77 feet, so this cannot be the average. This is the minimum width. Stormwater drain system. Can you go back to the first picture, please? And blow that up? Control plus will do that. If not, that's fine. I thought I was going to have a mouse up here to do the computer. I'm sorry. The, the land in question is outlined in green. The red is the, is the flow of the water toward that green lot from the south. All the water from the church on 16th Street flows north through a lot. All the water from the, on the street, from the east flows down the street. The map that's shown is only half of Kristner Jennings. Almost all of Kristner Jennings' water goes down that street, which is 18th Street to the west, to the absolute low point of the whole area along the street, which is on the southeast corner of the lot in question. Water from the west comes down 18th Street to that same spot, then goes into the lot that's there, going straight north. I'm going to call that leg one. I'll refer to that later on. It, it then goes to the left, which is west, which I'm going to call leg two, and then it floods that area and then goes north again into the, the north-central part of the three acres and floods that area, and then it goes on to the next lot and the next lot. This is the natural and historical flood-prone area. This is where all the water of Kristner Jennings goes to. Next picture, please. Next picture, please. This is looking west on 18th Street. There's a bush on the right that is on the subject property. That is about the corner of the property. You can see the water flows down the side of the street and goes, you know, somewhere. The next photo will show it going north. Next photo, please. Excuse me. This is the same area looking straight south. Water coming down the street and from the church does flood the yard of the lot to the north, to the south. That does, it also covers the street, but that is not a problem because it's only about three to five or six inches, and everyone knows we can drive through it. That's not a problem with us, the current situation of that street. Next picture. This is looking on the property, is looking toward the street, looking straight south. That is the, what I call leg one, the water flowing after and during a rain. You can see it's very wide, and there's a lot of water flowing there. The property line, the east side property line of the subject in question is to the left of that bush at the front. The other side of the property line is my property. Next picture. This will be what I call leg two, where it floods going west. It fills that area up. There's a lot of water there, but it floods that completely, and when it gets a little bit larger, then it goes on to the leg three. Go to the next picture, please. I did not get a picture of the flood of leg three that I talked about earlier, but this is the, looking from my property, straight west along the north boundary of the property. It shows the dip where the water will flood down and then finally overflow into the property on the right, which is another piece of property. This shows the concrete fence that started to be built. This was the foundation, but you can see the depth of the area that the water floods into, and that holds a tremendous amount of water. With the concrete fence, it's going to hold even more water, except for the fact that that land has now been filled in along this flood-prone area, up to the top of the concrete wall. Above the concrete wall is a wooden fence that's been erected. Next picture, please.
If I may.
Yes.
Well, I think we've got a picture of the flooding.
Okay.
And I think we've expressed our concern to the applicant that this application is not going to pass. The applicant is going to provide some new information in a new application, okay? So, while your concerns, not to minimize them, are valid, I think we understand the drainage point. I think we get the traffic point. I think we've heard that.
Okay.
But I think that perhaps it would be better, we'd be better served if we waited to see the new application so you could evaluate that because then your comments would be addressed to the application that we're seriously considering, okay? I think we all understand this application is not going to be the one that's considered. And we understand that there's traffic concerns, that there's drainage concerns, et cetera. I would address one point, though, that you've raised, and that is this. This property is zoned R1. Now, I understand your concern about the country, and I understand that you've had an ability that the area has developed in a manner that's not consistent with R1 density. I would, however, indicate that it is zoned R1, so the thought that it's zoned in some sort of agricultural manner is not an assumption that I would consider that you kind of base your thought. We'll take into consideration compatibility with your homes and others in the area, okay? And I think that's a point that needs to be made, that you need to consider. My suggestion is that you meet with Mr. Allen and the property owner, discuss your concerns, and potentially we'll see a new application that may address some of your concerns, and we can rationally address those concerns at another meeting. Because we're going to, they've asked to continue this, but this application's going to get denied, or it's going to get continued, and there's going to be a new application. I mean, no offense, Charles, but I think I can count to five, looking around with what we've got. And I would suggest that that way, we're probably better off addressing the one that we're going to see. So, I don't want to minimize, but I think it might speed up our process a little bit and allow you to form, to meet with the developer and talk over plans. And I'm not saying that we're going to approve that application, but I'm going to say that's the one that we're going to consider.
And I would add your comment, Commissioner Hensley, a reminder to the commission that some aspect of this is not unlike Nichols Hills West, where we dealt with development of increased density zoned R1, but where the R1 lots were generally large in scale and what was proposed did not meet --
Agreed.
... scale and so forth with what's already there.
I agree.
And I think that's an issue Mr. Allen and his client need to be aware of.
And I'd like to just reiterate both of those points. You've seen this gentleman's hand. You've seen the comments from the commission, so when you reconsider in your new application, hopefully those concerns will be addressed, or we might be back at square one.
So, go ahead, JJ.
So, there's no surprises that variances that are asked for today, a spud will have no effect on those. They'll have to be dealt with outside of the zoning.
Okay.
Because they're variances to the subdivision regulations.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
But maybe some of them are taken care of.
I have a procedural question.
Sir.
I have a petition of all the people. If they come up with a new proposal, do I need to get another petition if we decide to contest it?
Sure.
Yeah.
If it's not dramatically different than what's before us today, maybe not, but if it's going to be dramatically different, you may want to do that, which would suggest that we not see this in two weeks or four even, but that it'd be a longer period of time to allow for, if there is continuing protest for the protesters to have that opportunity.
So, I would suggest that we have, we move for a continuance to, not less than a month.
I'm reminded that the petition and the protest is to the lot splits. That's the way it's signed, so it's probably okay the way it is?
Yeah. Understood. Thank you.
Your petition will stand because it's really a protest to lot splits.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Charles, how much time?
Well, let's say a month because I think we're actually kind of switching from a deed approval to a spud.
Yeah.
Need to meet with the staff, so I think we'll end up doing a new notification and really --
Yeah, I agree.
It's going to get a whole new number and a whole new situation, so I think it's going to come in as a separate item.
So, that would be the 22nd --
2nd of November.
Okay.
12th?
Julian Taylor's here. He'd like to, he's the owner. He'd like to say a few things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There's a lot of --
Tell us your name and address, please.
Beg pardon?
Your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Julian Taylor, and my address is 8025 Northwest 20th Street.
Thank you.
So, I'm not very far from the land. I noticed that there's a lot of families moving into Oklahoma. Right now, they're settling in Edmund and Mustang. I looked on this land, and I thought this would be an opportunity to build upscale houses and have a place for rental houses or even a gated community. So, we're looking at really upscale houses, and to me, the flooding is not a factor with my land. My land is relatively high. On my lot number four, there was a deep depression that did flood. In the meantime, I have filled in that depression so that I don't believe there will be any more flooding, but I won't know until we have flooding next year. So, my concern is I want the ability to build some houses that would be a benefit to Oklahoma City. And it seems as though there's some idea that we shouldn't build houses, even though the land that we have for each house is over a half acre, and this was done because of subject tanks that we'll have to put in. I don't see any reason why I shouldn't be able to build houses on this land. I've heard their objections. I don't understand their objections. I looked at the deed. There's no restriction on the deed on how many houses I can put on the land. I'm willing to invest in putting these houses on there. I know that they say that I should only have three houses, but for what I paid for the land and in the improvement, I can't economically justify three houses. That's why I decided on four, on five houses. I would have a decent income on my rental properties at that. The fallback would be a minimum of four houses, which would be at least break-even as far as an investment. So, this is all I'm asking, a chance to build.
We understand. You got one lot split that was administratively approved. Any additional lot splits require our approval. And there's an issue of scale and how it fits in with the area around it. Your neighbors have raised concerns, and we've all expressed what those, what our thoughts are as commissioners, so we're going to hear this again in a month if your application is ready.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, 12th, November 12th?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Charles.
October, October 20th, October 22nd is a month.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion 22nd. Right. So, you might meet with these guys and get some information from them.
Motion is second to continue item 14 for four weeks. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of the items have been continued.
Going around the circles here. Okay, we don't have any planning commission committees, planning commission members. Nick?
As you guys know, my term expired in May and a terrible amount of, they asked numerous questions of what's happening. There's been indecision. There's been, I've received mixed signals about being reappointed, not being reappointed. Obviously, the tradition is to serve until the replacement is appointed. We've gone several months now. Nothing is happening. I spoke with the mayor a few days ago, agreed to continue to serve, but no later than January 1st. So, I'll be out of here in honor before January 1st. Numerous people have asked me, I've told you conflicting things. I've been told conflicting things. There's a straight skinny.
Well, I consider that a sad piece of news and not particularly good for the commission or Board Eight, but it's not our place to say it's a mayoral appointment, so it is what it is. Mr. Chairman, I refuse to believe it. As is your privilege. I didn't hear a thing. Bob can't hear, so it didn't matter. Okay. Anyone else? Planning Department?
If you all will stick around, I'm going to try to get your availability for some upcoming study sessions, and Sarah and Randy prepared a little survey that you can tell us when you're free, so I just need you three, and then we'll try to get those scheduled.
Mike's already answered for me, so I'm good. Development Services? Municipal Councilor? Citizens to be heard?
I had one thing. We got some, our spots reserved out there.
For parking?
But they're full of city cars.
There were three city vehicles.
Three city cars in the commissioner's parking lot, you know? Yeah, so I register that as just as, I don't want to get a ticket for coming down here for my unpaid job.
Being in the wrong spot?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm actually parked in my councilman's spot out there, so, because there was not a spot to park, so.
Well, maybe Aubrey and JJ can take that up with somebody.
It might happen if we could get them striped. I notice it's kind of hard to know exactly where you're parking because they're not striped, and so it's, the distance between cars is a little bit uneven, you know?
And at all sorts of angles, too. I've seen them parallel parked there as well as angle parked. Oh, yeah. Sometimes with trailers and their city trucks. There's no other business. Motion adjourned, and we are adjourned at 2:40.